Let me call the Berkeley City Planning Commission to order for its regular meeting of Tuesday, January 27, 2015. Would you all please rise for the plate?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I have a roll call, please?
Smith?
Here.
Morell?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Buckler?
Here.
Pop?
Here.
Murad?
Here.
Shadle?
Here.
Tengary?
Here.
Burnett?
Present. Now entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Murad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Morell. Any discussion on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Tengary?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Morell?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes. Now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November 25, 2014, meeting of the Planning Commission. Motion made by Commissioner Martin Smith. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Murad. Is there any discussion on the minutes of November 25? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote.
Murad?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Morell?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Everybody? We get everybody?
Got everybody now.
Thank you. Now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 9, 2014, meeting of the Planning Commission.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Richardson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Pop. Any discussion on the minutes of December 9? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Shadle?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Morell?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Tengary?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Communications?
A few things. You've got DDA minutes. You have a brochure on Michigan Association of Planning Training. If anybody's interested, let me know. And you have a couple of PowerPoints that used a lot of toner, but I thought they were really good. I had gone to a transportation one-day conference before the holidays in Lansing, put on by the Michigan Association of Planning. And these are my two favorite sessions, so you have the PowerPoints from them. And then you all have a copy, bound copy somewhat, of the sign and zoning ordinance. Any of the ones that you have at home, pitch them. And this one is the most up-to-date for your reference.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. At this point in time, I'll entertain citizens' comments. Any citizen who would care to address the Planning Commission on any topic not on our agenda may step up to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and you may have the floor. I'll remind citizens they'll have an opportunity to participate in the discussions as we move through our meeting. Hearing no citizens' comments at this time, I'll close that part of the meeting, and we'll move right on into the regular order of business.
Item number one is site plan review, SP 0814. Jeff Hutchison for Bevchi LLC, 3387 through 3391 12 Mile, southeast corner of 12 Mile in Buckingham, is requesting site plan approval for a facade change and site work. This was before the Planning Commission last month, and there were a number of items, and it was postponed to a date certain. I did speak with Jeff Hutchison, who's the project manager for the project, and he advised that they were working through some interior layout, floor plan, that was going to end up affecting what the outside of the building looked like, and so he requested a postponement to February.
So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion from the Planning Commission to postpone to February.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Morell.
How do we postpone SP 0814 to our February meeting?
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Kind of a tie. Who is it?
You gotcha. One of them.
Shadle?
Pretty sure. That's my bad ear.
Yes, that's what I said.
Yep. Okay. All right.
Ready?
Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Richardson?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Morell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tengary?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Okay.
Item two.
Item two is site plan review, SP 0115, Berkeley Holding LLC, 3044 12 Mile, north side of 12 Mile, between Robine and Griffith, is requesting site plan approval for a facade change.
Is the petitioner here this evening? You want to sort of, will you state your name?
Kip Sorota.
Pardon?
Kip Sorota.
Kip Sorota. You want to sort of describe the project for us, please?
Basically, they're taking down the green canopy, removing the drive-it, and putting a new storefront in, just laid a trim, drive-it above it.
Questions from the Planning Commission for Mr. Sorota.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Martin Smith.
What materials above the storefront framing?
That's drive-it.
That's also drive-it?
Yes.
Okay. Is there something important about the six feet of panels and drive-it on each side? And the reason I ask is our ordinance calls for 40 feet of glass, 40 to 80, not feet, I apologize.
Forty percent.
Forty to 80 percent of glass, and as this was calculated out as 36 percent. Is there something, and we have the right to adjust that, and that's fine. Is there something important about the six feet on each side and why we couldn't get a 40 percent of glass?
The tenant wanted that wall space, and they're going to have the computer toys in there, and so they didn't want any more glass in that on the front of the store. They wanted the wall space inside. It has a hard ceiling on it with, you know, special lighting. It's like a showroom, but it's an interior showroom.
Okay, so that's all existing?
Well, it's in now. The ceiling's in, the walls are in, and...
Okay. What is that backup material for those panels?
It's plywood.
I mean, the frame, is it?
Oh, you mean the metal at the bottom, the six feet high?
Well, no. What's the wall construction at that point?
It's metal studs with, it's an existing wall.
Okay.
Cutting through an existing wall to put in the storefront.
Okay, so it's existing light gauge studs?
They're heavy gauge, but they're metal. Metal studs, yes.
Okay. Okay. I just bring that up because we do this all the time, and it's about 10 percent, and you know, we're up against this all the time, and it's no big deal to me. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that fact, that we're about 10 percent short. And if it's a function of what they want to do on the interior. Okay. What's the base? I see on either side of the, at the storefront, it looks like the cement panels, the fiber cement panels, and this metal trim?
Yes.
Go down to grade. On either side, it looks like there's a base of some sort. What would that material be?
Metal base. You have to keep that concrete paneling four inches off the wet. If it gets wet, it can decompose.
Okay, so should that also be across underneath the storefront, then? Is it the same panels?
No. The panels under the storefront are, you know, they're a different material.
Okay, those are fiber cement?
Yes.
Well, then what are the panels?
It's a different mixture. That's the only difference.
Because, yeah, it also says fiber cement.
Right.
Okay, but that is a different type of fiber cement panel?
We submitted a copy of the panels that are on the side.
I have a submittal of the trim pieces. I don't have a submittal of the panel.
I didn't submit the other. It's there now. It's been there for 20 years. Right now, it's a brown panel that's on the store right now, and it's in good shape.
Oh, so that's staying?
We're reusing it.
On either side? Okay. Okay, that wasn't clear in the drawings. Okay.
I asked...
So you're reusing the existing? I'm just trying to understand what's here. That's why we asked.
No, no, that's...
Reusing, oh, so you're reusing the existing panels in relatively good shape?
No, in perfect shape.
Or in good shape?
It's kind of amazing.
Why will cross it off and say in perfect shape?
Okay.
Okay. And again, just so you understand, if we don't know what we're looking at, or me, I have difficulty...
I should have been clear on that. I apologize.
Yeah. That's okay. You made it very clear. Do we have colors?
The color that's on the colored brochure is what they're presently proposing.
Which color? Gray or white?
It's gray.
Okay. And that's the gray of the panels?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. What about the drive-it? The EIFs?
Drive-it's just beige.
Standard drive-it beige?
Yeah. Standard drive-it beige. It's covered America.
Okay. Any exterior lighting planned? I know there's a canopy there now. Probably has lighting in it. I forgot to look up.
It's all going to be removed. It's just lit from the inside to draw people into their showroom.
Okay, so there's no lit sign or anything?
No. Well...
That's a separate permit. I'm just asking.
That's a separate. The tenant is really up in the air what they want to do for a sign.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I think I know what I'm looking at now.
Other comments from the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman? These little...
Go ahead.
Kind of scribbly things in the drive-it panels.
Nothing. The tenant wanted to discuss with their, that's part of their signage.
I got you. So...
Whatever it is.
Nothing's yet proposed for that. It's just sort of to say that something's going to be there.
They don't know what they want to use there at this point.
Regarding the window frontage, I understand the six feet. Could you possibly get that extra 4 percent to get to 40 percent by going up?
Not really. It's already the interior ceiling.
Oh, okay. I got you.
Other comments? Mr. Martin Smith.
Mr. Tengary brought up the thing about these little squiggly things.
What they have is they make these animated computers, things like toys, and they were thinking as part of their signage they would have something like that, some metal piece, but that's their signage. It has nothing to do...
So will it be projecting far out onto the?
No.
Okay, so it's pretty flat, a flat sculptury type of thing?
Sculpture, right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments from the Planning Commission? What's the desire of the Planning Commission? Rush. Mr. Martin Smith.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve this. However, I want to ask the Planning Commission if anybody does have an issue with the 10 percent less glass area.
I do not, given...
Mr. Richardson?
I'm sorry. I do not.
Ms. Pop?
I'm fine.
Mr. Morell?
I think we're seeing a net improvement here, so I really have no, I have no problem.
You, Shadle?
No issues.
Ms. Buckler?
No issues.
I agree with Commissioner Morell about the improvement, and I think we're only 4 percent shy of our minimum, so it's fairly nominal.
No, 10 percent, actually, but still.
Are you going to make the motion?
Make a motion to approve...
4 percentage points.
Wait, let me get it. Site plan 01-05.
1-5.
Hmm?
1-5.
That is a 1, thank you. Site plan 01-15. Thank you.
No conditions?
No. The only condition I would have had would be the glass area, and since it seems to be a consensus, that's not going to be an issue.
Is there a second to the motion? Second by Commissioner Murad. Discussion now on the motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Morell.
Just a quick question, and I didn't see any comments from any of the departments on it. There is a note on the bottom of this drawing that says, "The fiber cement panels encroach an inch and a quarter out of the public right-of-way."
Mm-hmm.
And I was just making sure that that isn't going to prove, I don't want to go ahead and approve this and find out that's an issue and have to have them come back.
No.
Ms. Ann?
No, I don't. We, if we're just going to be okay having cinder block buildings that are right on the right-of-way, then that's what we're going to end up having, so I think we need to be okay with a little bit of an encroachment to have a better-looking facade.
Okay.
My feeling was that is existing, so...
I understand.
The new ones are two inches.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I went out to the side. They already encroach, so it would be, and it's been there for whatever, so otherwise...
Off the one encroachment and putting back another one. That's fine. Okay.
So I guess, my thought, that's why I didn't bring it up, because I bring, we do talk about that all the time.
I know we do. I didn't bring it up.
If it's a six-inch encroachment or eight-inch, well, that starts getting interesting. Now, the drive-it above the EIFs, I don't like the word "drive-it," but that's okay. The EIFs above encroaches two inches, but that's 6 foot 4 above the sidewalk, so a guy like me is not going to smack his head on that, so...
To me, it's like a grandfathering situation.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
No other comments? Okay. Ms. Vanson could have a roll call, please.
Yes. Pop?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Morell?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Tengary?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Ready to go?
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Item number two.
Item number three is discussion regarding valet parking ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, three.
That's all right.
Feels like two.
Okay, everybody has received this. The city council reviewed this at a work session at their last meeting, and it asked the Downtown Development Authority and us to take a look at it, and if there's any questions or comments on it, to make them tonight, because I believe council's going to take this up on the regular meeting on Monday, coming up on whatever it is, February 2, right?
That would be February 2, yes. I wasn't sure what their timeframe was.
I thought they were on the move forward with it, so... So, folks, have you had a chance? I hope you've all read it. Had a chance, comments?
I have a question?
From Murad.
So, this is for a business that will be staging their valet in the public right-of-way. So as an example, a place like Omaras, if they wanted to do valet in their own parking lot, this ordinance wouldn't affect them?
My understanding is, is that, at least the ordinance, I reviewed this some time ago, that it actually precluded valets operating in the public right-of-way. The permitee shall at no time unless expressly authorized in the permit park or leave standing in the public right-of-way, use the public right-of-way for vehicle pickup and drop-off locations.
Okay.
So this would be for a business that is either operating valet or is subletting essentially that service and is contracting for that service to make sure it's operating in accordance with the conditions of a business license and this ordinance.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Buckler?
Can you explain that again? They will be permitted to operate in the right-of-way, correct?
No.
No. Okay, because your definition says that a permitee means any person permitted by the city to operate a valet parking service who uses the public right-of-way for pickup, drop-off, or movement of vehicles to be valet.
Well, I think you'd have to use them to move them, probably.
Just to move the vehicles.
If you're just going to operate valet within your parking lot. I misunderstood. I thought you meant if, say, Omaras was going to use the Guildcrafters quilt shop for extra parking, then if they're going to go across the right-of-way to get to another parking lot, then they would need to operate this.
They're just parking within their own private property. They would not need a permit.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was going for.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry I was unclear.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Richardson?
Ms. Vanson, I have a couple of questions on that.
I will try to answer them. It's not my ordinance. The city attorney drafted it, so I will do my best.
Couple of comments, a couple of questions. First question is, was any consideration given to including the amount of the permit fee in the ordinance?
Usually, the fees are not considered as part of the ordinance. They're usually set by a motion. Probably if council was going to adopt this ordinance, the next item would be a motion on the agenda setting, changing the fee schedule to include this. Motions only need to be read once and go into effect at a particular date, as opposed to an ordinance takes two readings if you want to amend it, and then it goes into effect 30 days later. So a motion's a bit more flexible if you want to change fees in the future.
On Section 3702, Sub 6, it talks about the applicant's representative will be available. That language implies that there's a requirement that there be a designated representative available to public safety or otherwise to the city, but it doesn't really clearly state that. So I guess I would recommend that it just flat-out say, the operator shall designate so-and-so and provide contact information. Also, on Sub Paragraph 1, same section, just a small point, but business, I think you'd probably be well-served by making that plural, because it could be more than one business. The license doesn't have any time limit on it. Apparently, an indefinite license, and it can only be revoked pursuant to 3704. Would that be, would that be correct?
That I'm not certain of.
Okay.
Give me a minute. I'll try to...
I just, do you know if any consideration was given to making them one-year licenses renewable, or?
I don't know. The city does not have, other than rental licenses, that need to be renewed, and we do have a liquor, anybody that serves liquor in the city does have an annual inspection that they pay for. Other than rentals, though, it's a one-time license fee in the city of Berkeley. So I'm, I'd have to look into what the thinking was, if they're going to do it like snowplowing where it's seasonal, or ice cream vendors are seasonal, or if they were thinking more like a business, which means once a business is in and they comply, they're allowed to continue.
No, it's just that this is a business that is going to routinely utilize public rights-of-way. It's going to employ probably a number of different drivers on a short-term basis. It's going to take some active supervision, so I'm just kind of thinking it might be prudent to at least consider making it a renewable license, so you can kind of keep track of the performance under this. And by the same token, in Section 3704, it provides for an appeal if your license is revoked. I'm just wondering if any consideration was given there to a time limit for filing that appeal, like 30 days or something like that? This is open-ended, so theoretically, you could come one year later and say, oh, I'd like to appeal that, so...
Okay.
I think maybe tightening up that little bit would be worth considering.
Okay.
I think that's pretty much it. I guess in the definitional section, I was kind of wondering why we had separate definitions for permitee and operator, since they seem to be one and the same, but that's probably not a major concern. I guess maybe if they're looking at the ordinance again, they might want to just look and make sure the definitions are as succinct and clear as they could be. That's all I...
I'll make a note of it.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Buckler?
Amy, do you know if they envision that the business would apply as the permitee and that they would hire whatever valet service that was needed, or is it the valet service operator? Did you envision would be the permitee?
My understanding would be it would be the valet parking service itself, as I know that's been a concern, is who exactly is parking cars?
So my second question is, could I open a valet parking service in front of a business that didn't want one?
Well, you can't operate on the public right-of-way.
Unless it's expressly authorized in the permit, on Page 2, under 3703A.
Oh, I see. Unless, yes, I see what you're saying.
So if I catch on a bad day and you authorize, I'm just saying.
Yes, I suppose, in theory, if you wanted to operate on the public right-of-way in front of a business, and the city thought it was a good idea to give you a permit to do that, and you've had all your ducks in a row on where you were going to put those cars, then yes, in theory, you could do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, it's Ms. Buckler. Mr. Morell.
Does it say someplace that you can't do that?
Since, since Item 30A, Number 2, says you can't pick up or drop off in the public
right-of-way, the only place you can do that would be on private property, which ostensibly would be owned by the business. be owned by the business. So, it seems to me, and since you have to have a signed statement from the owners or manager of the business to be served requesting their services, I don't see that as being an issue.
Okay, no, I...
Yeah. Now, an issue that I do have is that, again, back to this definition of permitty, says that a permitty who uses the public right-of-way for pickup, drop-off, or movement, and then over here it says, "Oh, by the way, you can't use the public right-of-way to pick up or drop off."
Unless it's authorized, excuse me.
And again, I suppose, yeah, you could be authorized by the permit. That's confusing as all get out, that it seems like one place says you can do it and one place says you can't. And I don't know if there's a way to clean it up, but I've yet to give you the capper on the confused-as-heck statement here. On Page 3, Item D, valet parking attendants, the permitty shall not allow vehicular and pedestrian traffic on the public right-of-way to not be impeded by the valet parking service.
So, it's a typo.
I'm stumped, but I didn't know which way they were going with it.
I don't think you're supposed to impede...
Double negative.
I don't think you're supposed to impede vehicular pedestrian traffic by operating...
The double negatives should be for a little...
The gist is that valet parking attendants aren't supposed to block traffic, either pedestrian or vehicular.
All right, I got it. Okay, so that one, yeah, that one needs to be...
That's a typo. Gotcha.
That one needs to be tweaked up a little bit.
Double negative, got it.
I did submit...when this went around via email, I actually did submit a bunch of comments.
You did, and I forwarded to the city attorney.
Yeah, and the attorney recognized your comments.
Good. Okay, I don't...yeah, but, so I don't have any more.
Other comments?
Mr. Tengary. Yeah, to go back to the conflict between the definition of permitty and Section 3703-2A2...
703...oh.
703A2, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
There may be some changes you could make to the definition of permitty that would help to reduce the conflict, perhaps something along the lines of who uses private property or where permitted the public right-of-way, and I think that would cover the conflict.
Okay.
I'm assuming that the exemption for the public right-of-way is primarily aimed at Woodward Avenue, where portions of the parking are actually in the public right-of-way. You've got those, like in front of Crispellis, there's those parallel spaces, that's in the public right-of-way. So, I'm assuming that that's primarily what they're trying to do there.
And that would be, excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Martin.
That would be, I think, a case-by-case basis as to where this is located in the city of Berkeley, right?
Yeah, I think the idea would be, if public safety's reviewing the permit, they're going to look at what's going to not impede the pedestrian traffic and the vehicular traffic, and what's going to make the most sense from a safety standpoint. And if the right-of-way is going to get the job done, then I think they would allow it. If it's not going to get the job done, then other plans need to be made.
Regarding the public right-of-way, I didn't notice anything that, perhaps I just missed it, but I didn't notice anything that prohibited an operator from using a marked parallel parking space for the operation of a valet parking service.
Part of a right-of-way.
What's that?
It's part of a right-of-way.
It's part of the right-of-way, yeah.
Can't do it.
I'm just thinking, if you've got this exception, or if you're expressly authorized to use the right-of-way, and you decide you're going to use a parallel parking space for pickup and drop-off, is what I'm saying, I would...
That also would be subject to the permit, I would suppose, is that that would be part... You'd have to discuss it in advance with public safety.
You'd have to have a location marked out before you were given this exception, I'm assuming.
If you were to look at, ignoring Woodward, if you were to look, try and apply this ordinance to 12-Mile Road, I think it's pretty obvious that if a service wants to run valet parking on 12-Mile, they're going to have to appeal to the city to use the right-of-way for queuing, for pickup, for drop-off, for all of those things, except for parking, and they would have to be successful in that in order to be able to do it.
Right.
Whether or not to be granted is another question, but I think if, from a fairness standpoint, you're absolutely right. They could, they would have to use, you know, if you were to look at, like, the frontage along the theater, if there was something there that wanted a valet park, they would have to use the parallel parking on 12-Mile in order to do so. You're absolutely right.
Other comments? Okay.
I will let the city attorney know. Thank you.
All right. Pardon? Sure. Step up, state your name and residence.
Hello, I'm Tara Hayes from Berkeley. So, first, I too had questions about the definition of the permitty, because there are several places, so I just wanted to reaffirm that, as well as the fee question that Mr. Richardson brought up, because it actually will specify in Section 3704 that it was set forth in this article, but it isn't.
Okay.
So, then, my next point is actually a request. So, if I can approach, can I give you a copy of what I would like to have added to this?
Sure.
Sure.
Thanks. Okay, so when this handout comes around, you'll see I kept the ordinance article exactly as stated, and then I did a period of ellipsis to get us to Section 3703, which is the one I'm talking about. And then I have in bold the changes I've made. So, I've added a D here, and then I changed the next two to E and F, which would be subsequent from there. So, my request here is that, in addition to these operating requirements, that in designating parking valet-only, which is something that is happening in the city, that the permitty shall be allowed to designate as valet-only only those parking lots and/or spaces which exceed the number of off-street parking spaces that Section 138-219 requires the permitty to have for its patrons. And I'm requesting this on, because as the valet has come up several times, Red Coat has been the example that's been given as to how people utilize valet parking. And Red Coat, of course, does, in the back, mark that single lot as valet-only also, but they do have all the spots that exceed what they own, because they own all the lots around, and then they also have a shared parking agreement with Sprint, and they pay for the lighting, et cetera, there. So, it seems that what we have right now is that the valet option has been utilized to meet the required parking, and yet, there isn't always a parking. So, in terms of whether or not this is appropriate, I don't know, but I'm asking nonetheless. And then, there is also a, in, so, one other point. In Section 3704, there's a missing E. We go from D to F, and I didn't know if that was something...
Where does it go?
Did I get a different...so, on Page 4, we end with D...
Four is D, five is F.
And we go to F, so...
I misunderstood you, I'm sorry. A, B, C, D. Yeah, I think it's just missing.
Okay. All right, thank you for that consideration.
You're welcome. Thank you. Other comments? Okay. There you have it, Ms. Vanson.
I've got it.
So, we'll move on to Item Number 4.
Item Number 4 is just a discussion regarding the Form-Based Code. I wanted to give you an update. I met with Kathleen Duffy of LSL Planning at the beginning of this month, and we talked for a couple of hours, and she has requested information from Oakland County. She's gotten the zoning map from our city engineer. I actually spoke with somebody at Oakland County with regard to getting a map of homestead versus non-homestead properties as a way of kind of, as we were talking about, multiple family in the city that are within our neighborhoods, whether it's two families, or three families, or four families. And so, we're working on that with Oakland County. She, I asked her when she thought might be ready to come before the Planning Commission has a work session, and she said March would be a good time, if you want to put March 10th on your calendars.
Okay, everybody, March 10th on your calendars. It's a Tuesday, it's the second Tuesday of March. We'll have a work session that evening.
At the same time as usual?
Same time, 7:30.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Martin Smith.
Amy, why do we want to do a work session? I mean, I don't care if we come here to another evening, we just don't want it on camera.
Oh, I don't think it's so much of a matter of camera. I'm assuming that you're going to have lots of items in March. It'll be spring, and you'll have lots of...
Okay, fair enough.
So, the intent was, if, you know, we're going to start hashing out an ordinance, it would just be much easier to do...
That's fine, I'm just curious.
As a one-item thing, instead of trying to fit it in between applicants.
We used to have, for the new people on this board, we used to have work sessions every month, so...okay.
So, that was why I suggested it, okay. And it's still a public meeting, anybody can come.
Anybody can come, it's open to the public.
Absolutely, it is.
It's just more informal.
Right.
Right, and it's one item on the agenda, instead of making it Item 5 at the end of a long night.
Yeah, because I can remember when we used to have drawings and boards, and we'd rattle around. Rattle around the room, so...
Okay, all right. Then I'll entertain any citizens' comments. Any citizen who would care to address anything else on the agenda this evening, they may step up. Hearing no citizens' comments, we'll go around for liaison reports. Chamber?
Chamber met on the 14th. There, since they have some new board members and a new president and vice president, and so they're reviewing all their committees to reshuffle some people around in that regards. There is a blender next Monday at 5:30 at Amici's for all chamber members. And then they're planning a staff appreciation event for the high school sometime in March. And one of the new things they're doing now, you know, as I'm liaison there, they contacted the city of Huntington Woods to see about getting maybe a planning and a council liaison, and to start off with, the city manager decided to attend, so she was at the meeting for the first time. Just she wanted to get a feel for it and to see if there was a need to have somebody from the different committees there, so I guess there, so I found out from her that they're working on a new master plan, Huntington Woods, so, and they're trying to, you know, look at the complete streets thing, housing for seniors, community development, they want to do some stuff with Coolidge, with Oak Park, so I think it'll be a good tie-in for us, help us out, so. And that's about it.
DDA, anything? You've given us a report. They've published a report, so...
I passed it out.
Any comments on the meeting or anything? Nope. Mr. Richardson, anything from environmental?
No, the January meeting was canceled due to a number of conflicts, so I have nothing to report.
And I assume nobody attended Parks or Rec or anything? We don't have any representatives there, I guess that's it. I guess I hit them all, right?
Yep.
DDA? No, I haven't got to that yet. So, council meeting, we met a week ago, and of course, the big item was, for us, was to look at the resolution, this work session, they had it on a work session, for the valet parking, and they spent quite a bit of time discussing it. And they wanted us and the DDA to look at it, as I had previously mentioned in the meeting. Our other ordinances have had their second reading, and they've all passed, and so we're...
They're in your book.
We're in a book. So, that was council. Council meets Monday evening again, and I believe they're going to tackle this again. Hopefully, they'll have all our comments, and we'll be ready to go. So, that is that. So, at this point in time, I'll run around the room. Mr. Martin Smith, anything this evening?
No, sir.
Mr. Richardson?
Nothing from me.
Ms. Pop?
No.
Mr. Morell?
Nothing at all.
Murad? Mr. Morell?
Oddly enough, no.
Ms. Shadle?
No.
Ms. Buckler?
No.
Mr. Tengar?
No.
Ms. Vanson?
Just really quickly, just to give you an update, our part-time licensing clerk, Denise Vaughn, quit. She got a full-time job with the city of Detroit, so we are once again shorthanded with the city. The department that's already lean and mean is considerably leaner, so I'm filling in with that, along with other things, so let you know what's going on.
Okay, I don't have anything else. What do we got? Anything for February? We'll have the Radiator Hospital back, hopefully.
Yes, and nobody else has applied, so...
Nobody else has applied for anything.
But I do hope to have something on signage. I know we were talking about the lighting for the digital signs, and I haven't forgotten it, I just haven't gotten to it.
All righty, I don't have any other comments, so for that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Morell? Mr. Morell. Motion's made. Seconded? Seconded by Mr. Murad. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?